Don't lie.
Sean, are you on?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can now.
Okay, here I am.
The public hearings, are the public, the public hearings are still open on, on the two resolutions for um, uh, one-way streets and, and stop signs and.
I think this, we're just, we're opening it tonight, right?
I thought we were, I thought we were closing it tonight and then voting on the resolutions and that, is that in?
I think we're opening it tonight. We could close it tonight, but I think we're opening it for the public hearing. You could, you could act on it if you'd like.
Oh, you know what? I'm just, as I'm looking down here, we'll open it, we'll open it first and then when we get to it, we can, if there's no comment, we can close it. Your correction.
Did you guys see that Scoop died? Is that true? I heard a rumor Scoop died.
I heard.
McKinney.
Oh, he did?
A lot of people.
Heard that yesterday, but couldn't, I heard that yesterday, but couldn't confirm it.
Yeah, neither could I.
He definitely did. Yeah, but he wrote his, uh, his, his article or his, his column last week and then he passed away, uh, I think it was Friday.
I feel bad. He said, was such a nice man. A lot of good people died this week.
Yeah. Sean, how old was he?
That I do not know.
Seventy-nine.
Seventy-eight.
Seventy-nine.
And Claire, one of your classmates too. I don't know if she's a couple years, they're older than you.
Who?
Um. Rose, Rosie?
Rosie Rizzi.
No, Caruso.
Oh, Rose Caruso.
She wasn't in my class.
Oh, I, she's like fifty-six, fifty-seven?
Oh, thanks, Joe. I really appreciate that.
Okay, guys, it's seven o'clock. Um, welcome to the first meeting of two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, Lenny, would you lead us in the, in the pledge of allegiance, please?
Hello, thank you. My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic to which it stands. One nation, under God.
Lenny, thank you. Uh, first order business is to open a public hearing on local law G twenty-twenty. It's be able to, um, I'll leave the public open. Um, is Wendy on? No, maybe not.
No, she's not, not yet.
Uh, Sean, or did you want to talk to these at all? Just, well, I believe it open and then when we get to the resolutions, we can close.
Yeah, I mean, if anybody has any comments, they make the comments. I mean, it's just, uh, you know, you're, you're making, uh, what is it? Mile Hill a one-way.
Mile, Mile Hill is one-way. Ransom Road is one-way downhill.
Down the hill, right. And then, um, you make it a couple, uh, commercial and, um, Willow Dock, you're making, uh, putting some, some no parking.
So no parking signs, that's correct.
Right.
Okay, we'll leave that, we'll leave that open. So we'll go to, uh, go to, uh, report assessors, the assessors, uh, there's a report out to you from the assessors. Um, uh, Lenny and I on, on, on what used to be the beautification committee. Lenny's working with, um, the, the people down at the Grape juice factory. Lenny, you want to talk to that a little bit?
Yeah, it probably shouldn't be beautification, it should be cleaning.
Well, we'll, we can fix that name.
Anyway, yeah, they're, they're cleaning up downfield Spider Mill, uh, down at the bottom a little bit. Got a couple of trailers that to be gotten rid of. They have one there that's on its way to Jersey. And, uh, the guy that wants to take the big tanks that are standing on a corner, uh, is having a little bit of trouble getting, uh, getting permitted one fifty feet long. And you have to have a low trailer, otherwise it'll be too high. So, um, I gave him my card to give to the guy up in the middle that says, if you need help getting those permits, I will take care of it. Um, we'll do what we need to do to hopefully get those moved out of there. And, uh, they've been around the place pretty good. So hopefully we'll put it out. I saw a couple of old trailers there to make it disappear. That's where we are with that one.
We're making progress. Dave, uh, do you want to say anything about, uh, buildings?
I'm not tonight, Fred.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Uh, I have, I have nothing. Uh, I get anything on the EDC?
Uh, nothing, nothing, nothing.
Okay, um, I wouldn't, um, Fire District, um, I'll, we're, 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 Lenny, I'll let, Lenny, you want to talk to Fire District about, um, when we get to resolutions about, uh, a one-month extension?
Okay, uh, I've seen from, uh, Mobile Life, uh, as of yesterday, they hadn't gotten back to us with a proposal on what they can do for the amount of money we have left. So I said to them, I said, listen, I, I said, unfortunately, we need to vote on something, you know, tomorrow night, whether it's an extension or to find somebody else, or you have to do something different, or whatever the case may be. So today, I proposed from him, uh, but we also have a one-month extension. That proposal can be written out and every, all of our, all of the members can get it to look at it and go over it. I just did a little bit because, you know, uh, there might be a few things we'd like to question. So we'll have time to do that. And if we have to, we'll have a little bit of time to maybe, uh, look somewhere else at maybe an alternate proposal. But we'll have an additional month to do that. So I guess later on, I need to make a motion to, uh, accept the extension for one more month. But it was a short month. It's only twenty-eight days, so.
You know, we'll, we'll, we'll make that, we'll make that, we'll make that K.
Can I just, can I just make a comment on that?
Yes.
Let, Lenny, Lenny and I have been working on that together.
Yes.
And, and I just want to comment that, you know, we pay a fee for, for service for all of our townspeople to get ambulance service through Mobile Life. And it's not that we're unhappy with the service or that we're giving them a hard time about their contract. And Fred, you can verify this, you know? When we were in the process of the budget, they, they didn't come to us before we started the budget. After the budget was done and tax cap, you know, was around a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Right.
You know, that's, we're going to get is a hundred and fifty increase plus, you know, everything else we have to pay and absorb with the hundred and fifty. They, they told us they wanted an additional hundred thousand dollars above what they're already getting. And that's kind of why we're in the situation we're at. And, you know, Lenny and I met with them. We were very, you know, adamant that, you know, although we love your service, we don't have a hundred thousand dollars as a talent just to give you for this service, you know? It's something you should have been talking with us and negotiating before the budget was done.
Correct.
I mean, they were very adamant, well, that's what we need. And, you know, they didn't want to give us a proposal. And then finally, they gave us one extension and then they, Lenny was really a champion through this.
Yes, he has been.
And, um, very diplomatic. I was very impressed. And, you know, finally had to say to them, well, we can't, and I don't think they understood that we can't pay them without a board resolution to keep extending it. And I don't know if they're not comprehending it or trying to play hardball with us, but, um, you know, and they were adamant that they were only going to give us the one that we did last month. And at the eleventh hour, they just came through. What, Lenny, they told you yesterday they would extend or was it today?
We just got something, we got something late, late, I let you talk about, I'm sorry.
The conversation was yesterday and we got, uh, the extension, uh, uh, sent in today. But Joey, it's a hundred and three thousand they wanted, which was thirty-one percent more than the budget from last year.
Right, right. And, um, you know, they have their rationale, but they weren't giving us anything extra than we already had for the hundred and three was their claim of cost of doing business. And, um, you know, and, and the thing is, they're not doing these ambulance trips for free. Um, they're, they're charging. Um, so, you know, they have to understand that we're a municipality and, you know, our taxpayers cancel, be on the hook for whatever these people want to, want to charge us, so.
Well, I think, I think from what we got late today, we got bullet points. They need to put it into, um, some language so that we can distribute it amongst the board so we can all talk about it.
The only thing I'm going to recommend is.
On up against the eleventh hour, uh, again.
And then I, I, I've talked to Lenny about this and, you know, I, I think we should really, we talked about this a couple of years ago. Um, look at other companies and see what they can do for the amount of money we can spend. Because I'll be honest with you, I'm really not pleased how hardball this company's playing with us. And, you know, a service industry, they should have a little bit of understanding. We are in COVID. I understand they're having hard times, but we're having hard times. We have a budget cap. Our townspeople are having hard times and, uh, you know, this is, you know, we're not, we're not extending it. We're not doing this. We're going to cut services. Maybe we should see what else we can get for that price.
All right.
There are the companies out there.
I, I, I agree. I think it's, we're in a time where everybody's got to tighten their belt. So, uh, we'll, we'll start to have this discussion after, after we get, uh, Lenny tomorrow when we get something in, in more, more form. And then we can get it out to the board and we can start to talk about this. Joe, I, Joe, I agree, girl. Good point. A very good point.
Thanks.
Okay, Joe, uh, I'm sorry, uh, Joe, uh, on, on.
So the, the schools, um, MLK was Monday, Martin Luther King Day. Um, so the school reopened on Tuesday. Students returned in their hybrid. Um, again, they're going on their, um, Monday, Fri- Monday, Thursday and Tuesday, Friday regiment with Wednesday, Wednesday, everybody synchronous, they all stay home and they get instruction from the computer. Um, so the kids are back. Um, very excited to be back. The high is doing a great job, you know, with the social distancing, making sure kids are getting their education. I mean, two days is not really a lot, but it's, it's better than nothing, you know, um, you know, under COVID times, hopefully now the vaccine's out and hopefully we'll get more doses. We can get our kids all back into school. Um, they are starting some sports. I know track, um, because it's able to be done outside and, you know, they can do social distancing. They started track practice and I know they're trying to start other practices that they can, you know, that they can follow the COVID restrictions. Um, the January regions that are coming up are canceled. So there's no January regions. And as of right now, the state has not told us if we're going to do three through, uh, eight assessments. And that's ELA, math, and then fourth grade and eighth grade science. And we don't know what's going on with the June, June, the June, um, the June regencies. Um, but this is making it very difficult because a lot of these GPAs are based on college placements and how to get in. So I really feel for these kids that are in this senior class. Um, it's a hard, hard, last year's class and this year's class. You know, they're really being deprived of their high school education and it's really, you know, hurting them in the, in the college placement. So I'm just going to say to kids and parents, again, do your best, study hard, load your classes, ask your teachers for extra help. Um, ask a friend that may be understand the content because kids usually learn best from themselves, from their peers. So, uh, you know, ask a peer that may get it for some help. Um, and, uh, the one thing though that is a silver lining um, through this whole COVID is that our kids throughout the state, throughout the country are really, um, shining in technology. They're really, uh,
Yep.
becoming great with this social media and using these Zoom meetings and their vocabulary and their reading is increasing because of the type of platform they have to use. So that's my report.
Not just the kids, like, like Lenny and I.
Well, Lenny, the verdict's out because I, we still using his phone, but he's getting there.
Thank you. Um, Lenny, you want to talk about lights? Up so, up, I skipped, let me, let me back up. Is, is Russ on for Hudson Seven? Okay, go ahead, lights.
You want to do lights or you want to do the landing?
Uh, pick, pick one.
Okay, the landing. I was on the phone today twice with Walter from Green. File a little more paperwork with CSX about the bars. He said he really believes in his heart that the paperwork has just as soon as, uh, he gets that confirmation, he gives up a twenty-four hour notice, uh, to get an inspector up there and ready to, they've already delivered the casing pipe that's piled up, uh, in the little additional parking area by where we have the dock piled up for the winter. Uh, so it's just matter of get all set the machine and starting to go. So I'm really, really hopeful that, you know, if not, it just, next week, following coming week, they can get going. Uh, now we'll go back to lights.
Yep.
Uh, we had called, uh, second and, uh, five them, five lights throughout, throughout the town that I was able to go get um, and, uh, turn them in. Uh, this time I knew they finished completion on changing thirty-five of them over, uh, and they were going to work on the rest of them. I haven't been able to get out at night to ride around and see how they did. But last time he called they when they finished their to hear from him that they're completed. As they get to those lights, they're upgrading them, uh, to the new, more efficient, brighter lights. The lights are, should be, uh, a little more, you know, lit up a little paper at night. Uh, on, while we're talking about lights, Fred and I met with Central Hudson. Right, last Friday, Fred?
Yep.
And we, uh, we walked Havelin Road, um, because we've talked about lighting Havelin Road up. Do have the, we'll, 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 later. And, uh, there's actually twenty-seven poles. Now, what Central Hudson and their engineers decide, they're willing to give us as many lights as we want, but their special thing is over killing it.
Right.
So, um, you know, we're going to fly on their engineers, uh, to, to see how that lighting works out there. I guess what we're talking about that and, you know, the rail is, is, uh, Peter on for rail trail?
I was just gonna, I'm looking. Peter, are you on? I don't see him on. Do you want to talk to rail trail, Lenny?
The only, the thing about, uh, at present, we, we finished that job up there, you know, um, behind, uh, the Rotary Park.
Mrs. Crickellus's house.
Right, it came out absolutely beautiful. There's grass seed on the ground. So hopefully just as soon as the good weather gets here, that'll start to grow. Um, now, uh, I talked with Kendra today and we were talking about the, uh, eight targets. We have to open up an additional account. It's going to be machine or, or punch their number in, you know, when they call in or whatever. That you will start, uh, at the latest next week to get that up, uh, back. So then we can continue forward with the, uh, marking.
Right.
That, at the moment is about all I got.
Yeah, it'll be dedicated just for face parking.
Right, yeah.
Lenny, thanks. Um, Claire on planning?
Okay, um, let's see. I didn't, I haven't really done my homework, so I'm just going to read off here. Um, the villages is, they're back for a site plan, so more information and continued discussion. I see the views is back, um, and they are application for a site plan review. So they're back. Um, and then new business, um, Dave, I, I don't know, Highland Estates, the LLC, where is that? That's up on nine W someplace.
Yeah, that's just south of the, um, south of the Walgreens.
So they basically just want to put, um, offices, right? That's what it looks like.
Gas station and offices, yes. We'll see.
Yeah.
See, we'll see how the board, we'll see how the board responds.
Dave, is that, is that the blue point or no?
No, no.
It's more, it's that exactly, Stewart's is up in that area.
Yeah, it's right across the street from where the Stewart's wants to go.
Yeah.
It's from, it's from right eight south.
Okay.
Um, and then Salox is back, I see. Andola is back for conservation subdivision. So that, these are kind of all old businesses just coming back and tomorrow nights are meeting. So I'll tune in then to find out what's going on and report back in the next month.
Thank you. Um, uh, Lenny, Lenny, anything on water and sewer?
Uh, no, basically it was about the water and everything else. So we're all.
Good. Am I getting?
I'm lying to you. I'm lying to you. Uh, Adam came forward with a proposal. Am I correct about the water meters?
Yeah, what I recommended to Adam to do is, because it was yesterday, I told him to, to, to put forward, put forth the information that he had yesterday on the meters and on the, on the possibility of raising water rates. Like, told him to get it out to the whole board so that next month, we, again, we can all have time to chew on this and see what we want to do and check with other towns because they can't do stuff last minute. Um, so we'll, we'll all get to talk about it over the next couple of weeks and hopefully we'll have something on the agenda in February.
Okay, well, this is while we're on it. Um, as done as due diligence, we're checking with the other towns and we're still a bargain. Um, but as far as the meters go, just so everybody's got a little chance to think about it, uh, once the rate starts then, we're going to take sixty, seventy-two, how many meters? I don't know how many. Okay, they're going to take seventy-two meters right off the bat. So it's something we need to consider and we probably should dilly-dally on it. Right, rest my case.
Thanks. Mike, Mike, anything new on, on ZBA?
ZBA, um, applicant on Bellevue Road is, uh, looking for a two-lot subdivision. And, uh, the lots, the two lots, the width is, they're a little too narrow for the zone. So he's asking relief. Uh, one lot is, uh, forty-five feet short. And the second lot is fifty-nine feet short.
Okay.
And, uh, that's, that's all I have.
Okay.
Hey, hey, Mike, where, where around Bellevue? Because I know somebody's going to ask me this, you know?
Sure, one, one, one thirty-six.
Okay.
It's, uh, Ray, Raymond Constantino's lot.
Okay.
All right.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Mike. You're welcome. Okay, moving on. Is any, any old business to come before, any old business? I can't speak tonight. Any old business to come before tonight?
Yeah, I, I have some old business. Um, so, so Dave, Claire, anyone, you know, I'm, I'm asking it, does anybody hear anything, you know? Altamont Farms came to us hot and heavy with their, you know, their proposal and they're going to put the line in and all of a sudden we never heard anything. Have we heard anything new about them or did they just kind of fizzled out?
I did hear they came back. Um, but again, when I go to that meeting, uh, maybe I'll, if they're, if they, if we have discussion, what I'll do is I'll email you guys. But I did hear, Dave, you can answer, that they are back. Is that true? Are you muted?
Fred?
Yeah, uh, this is what we know so far, Joe, and we'll, 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 we'll deal with this as a board. Um, there's, there's, there's beginning to be some discussion about, uh, them proceeding and not doing the sewer line and doing the sewage package plant. We know we don't want to, I don't, Lenny, probably most of us, don't want to go there. So it may, if, we may need to either have a meeting next month with them, an executive session, or, uh, that'll be up to Sean, or we, as a board, uh, do a resolution, but we'll talk, we can talk about this as, uh, as we, as we get into our, um, honor before we do our workshop meeting.
And, and, and Lenny, Freddie, you know, I'm not telling you, I'm just recommending, you know, when we were in the moratorium, um, one of the things that, and, and Claire, you remember, we had the discussion about that, about stopping sewage plants and, and made a comment that we could stop it and not allow them to do with sewage plants. So you might want to just touch base with Paul and, you know, find out what he would meant by that because, uh, he was pretty sure, because remember, I wanted to add that in.
Yep.
When we were in that moratorium and he assured us that we needed to worry about that anymore.
Okay, well, again, again, as, as we get all the details together over the next couple of days, early before, before we get to the workshop, we'll, we'll all have, we'll have a discussion about this.
And, and also when you're there, anything on Blue Point? Because that's another project. That's a huge project that, um, all of a sudden it seemed like they went into limbo.
Blue Point meaning?
Oh, the old wine, the old wine.
Winery.
Yeah, that whole thing.
Again, I, we had some, we had some, again, apparently we, I've learned the hard way. Apparently they came to us in a, right, Len? Lenny and I both did. They, they, they start stirring a pot this summer. Um, and as we were told by our, 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 our employees that are long-termers with this, um, um, uh, it was just during a pot seemed to be billable hours, hours. Now, in the meantime, those of you who don't know, Mr. Feinberg has passed away, uh, this, uh, a month ago or so. Um, so the whole thing becomes unsure whether they're even going to proceed. But again, Joe, back to you, we got nothing. So.
And, and we just got to be leery with them because their big thing was wanting to make our taxpayers pay to bring them their, their water line, sewer line.
Correct. And that, and that'll never happen as far as a town paying for it.
Right. And, and then my last, last thing in it, in Sean, I'm not, you know, if you don't have the answer tonight, I've asked this a couple of times. I'm going to ask it again. Um, with, um, the apartment house, um, when we let him not put the sidewalk down into the village, he said he was going to put the sidewalk down from the rail trail to commercial. And then we found later, he was only going to give us five thousand dollars, which we found was not going to even cost cover anything of the sidewalk. Um, you were supposed to look in to see if there was anything writing that we could force or make him pay for the difference of that sidewalk.
Yeah, well, I talked to Elaine last week and asked her to pull the, pull the file out. Because I haven't really looked at the file. I, I, Dave and I have, uh, talked a couple of times. We really didn't get too far on it. But I did talk to Elaine last week and ask her to pull, pull it out. So I was going to stop down and take a look at it. Uh, unfortunately, this week with Monday, Monday being the holiday and today being, uh, I guess the town was closed. I, I, I didn't get a chance to talk to her yesterday.
Right, and, 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 no, I want to talk over you, but last week they were closed upstairs because of the, uh, because of what happened on, on Monday. So there, maybe they'll, as, as Dave gets back up, uh, tomorrow, Friday, this, end of this week and Monday, you can probably get back on that with her.
And, and Sean, the reason I keep asking is, is it's a lot of money. That, that, that piece is a lot more money than five thousand dollars and we could use that additional funds to continue the sidewalk somewhere else and start making our town more walkable. Um.
No, no, I know. I know. You, you've talked to me last couple of meetings. I know you, you've asked about it and, uh, I, I don't have much more to tell you right now. Like I said, but I did ask Elaine, I thought it was last week, maybe it was a week before, but I did ask her to pull the files so we could take a look, uh, you know, if there was any, uh, uh, anything that, that, that would make them, you know, uh, contribute.
And, and Sean, the reason I'm becoming a little more concerned, I keep asking you is what I'm fearful of, is that what I don't want to have happen is, is that, you know, like some statute of limitations, say, well, we built this project now X amount of years. You never brought it forward, um, you know, you have no ground to stand on, you know? That's what I'm concerned about.
And I understand. And I, I will follow up with Elaine and Dave.
Thanks.
Okay, thank, thank you. Any other old business before us tonight?
Uh, Fred, do you want to do my, my report?
Oh, yeah. Oh, I'm sorry. You know what, Jimmy? When I, I skipped over police. Let me just, let me plug Jimmy back in. Goes on police. Jimmy has his annual report. Jimmy, it's yours.
Thank you, sir. Uh, I'm going to forego December's report. I think it's more important I discuss what we did for the year. Um, so our yearly activity report, calls for service were twenty thousand, one hundred and sixty-five calls, three hundred and fifty-seven accidents. Out of those accidents, three hundred and one were property damage, fifty-six were injuries. Tickets for the year were one thousand, one hundred and thirty-six uniform traffic tickets, a hundred and four parking tickets, two hundred and nine arrests. We handled fifty pause complaints. And if you don't know what the pause complaints are, they're basically New York State calls us about any violations of the executive order for social distancing and mask at businesses and homes and such. So we handled fifty of those. Narcan use, we narcan eight individuals, um, all survived, no fatalities. The numbers higher than two thousand and nineteen, but no fatalities this year. Uh, CPR was, was performed twice, resulting in two life-saving, uh, an infant and a elderly lady. We assisted with three protests in town, all were peaceful. Our med box return, which is if people can drop off unused medications and narcotics, we destroyed a hundred and eighty, eighty pounds of it this year or two thousand and nineteen, twenty. Training was big. Um, even with the COVID and restrictions, we did a lot of training. New York State discrimination harassment training, unlawful harassment prevention, response use of social media, anti-bias policing, use of force and overview, law enforcement, police use of force, below one hundred, watch your speed, uh, operation motor vehicles, civilian response, response to active shooter, procedural justice, anti-bias training, New York State harassment and discrimination appliance training, guide to consensual encounters with the public, New York State firearms qualifications, crisis intervention training, supervisor school, CPR and AD training, Narcan training. And so overall upgrades we've, we've done over the year. Um, we ordered body cameras. They should be in actually this week. They should be in service February and March of twenty twenty-one. Um, being on, uh, delivery and, uh, policies. Live skin fingerprint and photo identification systems installed this year, which is an upgrade. It's a three-year per, uh, program we had to work on. We upgraded the Wi-Fi in the station for better connection to our patrol vehicles and the body cameras when they come in. Uh, we just installed two laptop computers in the patrol vehicles. The old ones we have are about seven years old, so we're upgrading those. They should be completed by the end of this month. Um, we upgraded our back side door, which, uh, gives us better security. Before there was no security on it. And we're still in the process and progress of doing our New York State Police Reform and Prevention Collaborative Committee. Uh, we're on our fourth meeting, which we wrap it up. We're on our fourth meeting, we should wrap it up in two more meetings. We made a lot of progress, a lot of training, a lot of changes are coming. So I just wanna thank the town board, our community, for all the support we had in two thousand and twenty. It was definitely a, a difficult year, probably the, the most difficult I've seen in my thirty years. I thank our department, our members, they forego their vacation and personal days to work to get us through this pandemic and, you know, keep serving our community. So they're really our true heroes, our guys on the front lines. Three of them, in November, December, did CPR on three COVID victims that passed away. So they were actually on the front lines, put themselves in harm's way. And I think we should just really take a moment to also remember and pray for the last count was seven hundred and, seven hundred and sixty-three town residents either have or had COVID, and forty have passed away so far, as of yesterday. So those numbers are staggering. Let's hope and pray this year's a little better. And that's all I got. Any questions?
Yeah, Jim, I got, I got two questions. One is, how, how are we making out with our partnership are urgent? You know, I'm really excited about that and proud that you took initiative to get them down here and get back into that.
Right, he's been already assigned to it, he started first week of January, actually. So he's up there one or two days a week, depending on availability. So he's dedicated just strictly to that.
And, and, and Jim, I wanna thank you when I call you, you know, it's always because I'm getting complaints from residents, and you always take my call and you always really help. And I know the answer, because you told me, but I want people to understand, because it's something that's, a lot of people are talking about vagrancy, especially one vagrant by Hanifert's, becomes very nasty, belligerent.
Yes, absolutely. We've dealt with him now, anybody's been to our police reform committee meetings, we've discussed the issues. He's a homeless veteran. We've, we've actually arrested him over fifteen times in two thousand and twenty. We've met, helped him to the hospital because of his inability to take care of himself, he's been released. We've had, we've reached out to Oracle, which is a county program for rehab, he walked out of that. We've had the Veterans Homeless Shelter come down to replace him in a, in a hotel, he walked out of that. Basically, he's not standing where he is, he's allowed to, waving his Trump signs, whatever signs he wants to wave, he's allowed to, it's his First Amendment right. When he walks off that medium, out to the roadways, when we have the issues, we take him to the solid counter, but he's been arrested fifteen times already, and we're quick being closed and reopening, it's just a matter of time. He stands there because people feel bad for him and give him money. So unfortunately, until people stop giving him money, he's gonna be there. We have another one on the north side of, of, by Truck Supply, he stands there also. Not as much as a, as a burden, but they're there, and that's what we're dealing with. Unfortunately, it's gonna be the new phase, there's no place for these people to go, and you can't make them go somewhere where they don't wanna go. So we've used all our resources that New York State has wanted us to do in two thousand and twenty with this new reform, and it's not working. He's now in the criminal court hands also, so we'll see where that goes. But at the end of the day, unfortunately, there is no law against him standing there, as long as he's not being, breaking any of the criminal, you know, law. When he does, and we go there, we do what we have to do, but we've literally dumped numerous resources into that one individual more than I've ever seen any other type of complaint before.
Yeah, and Jim, I just wanna comment on that, we, we have great people in our towns, they're very generous, they look out for the poor, they look out for the needy. We have so many good people in our town, and, and it's, it's not being heartless. I mean, if you wanna help somebody, you know, they have a sign, they want, they need diapers, or they need food, and you wanna give them a can, that's one thing. But when you're seeing a person repeatedly disorderly drunk, who knows on what, being a public nuisance, you can't give them money, because that's, they'll never leave.
And with this new bail reform, unfortunately, we arrested him in early last year, he tore up his paperwork in front of the officer, so they arrested him for littering. He did the same thing, because there is no arraignments for those type of charges. You just basically give him paperwork and they're, you can't even take away from the scene.
So, so Jim, the other thing, and Joe, I, I heard that you called too, and I, I've been getting, you know, everybody keeps calling me about it too, and, you know, it's sad, because that's what represents our town, you know? Like, they call him on Facebook, the mayor, and I'm like, it's, it's just such an insult to us.
Sad.
We've tried every avenue we can, we, like I said, we've reached out to every organization in the county that helps those, those in need, and the bottom line is, he refuses it, he refuses it. That's where, unfortunately, hopefully the court systems will take control of that. None of these charges warrant a jail sentence, but when's enough enough? You know, there's gonna be, there's gonna be issues up there, old occasions, we already had them. You know, we're dealing with whatever the parameters of the law allows us to do. You know.
I've seen them up there.
We've actually even spoke to our two liquor stores to let them know the law in New York State, that if you, you give alcohol to a known alcoholic or intoxicated individual, it's against the law, you need your license revoked, to stop them from selling the alcohol. So that's helped a little bit, but he's still there.
Yeah, he, he's, he's a nuisance to the traffic too, Jimmy. I've seen him quite a few times going back and forth across the lanes, I know that on one side, there's three lanes there, you know, there's gonna be an accident, I, I hope not.
Yeah, and it's, it's not even, it's not even the, the, the signs he's holding, you know, everybody has a right to freedom of speech, I get that. But, but the issue is, he's becoming violent, he's becoming belligerent, and to our people and our community, and, and he's becoming a danger going into the traffic. And I, the reason I, I wanted you to talk about it, Jim, is I just want people to know that you're trying, the board's listening, because this board, you know, although sometimes we do disagree, but we all do agree we love our community, and we all have pride in the community, we want it to look beautiful, and, and even when we do projects and we disagree on it, we want the best project for our town and to look the best.
Absolutely.
So we do take this seriously, and, and that's why I wanted it out there, because I want people to know, we're trying, but the law limits what you can do.
Absolutely, I wish we had more, more teeth to do what we can do with him, but unfortunately, that's what we gotta deal with. So we'll deal with it, and hopefully, when courts open up, we can have a little more say into it and see if we can kinda get him guided in a different direction.
And it'd be nice if people stopped giving him money, too.
Yeah. And Claire, and I, I know you're not, like I said, that's not being heartless.
No.
If you wanna give somebody that truly needs, that's one thing, but when you see a person repeatedly.
Screaming, he screamed.
Screaming, drink, and, and from what Jimmy shared with me, is the individual starts out okay, and then once he starts getting money, he starts getting whatever it is that he gets, and as the day progresses, he becomes nastier and nastier. And I, I did get a report, Jim, I didn't call you, it seems like maybe he's living in the woods somewhere on Vineyard, but I did get a report from somebody, they caught him on their camera, he was running up and down their road, up and down their yard. So I don't know if he's living on Vineyard and the old farm there that's.
Yeah, we have an idea where he's living, and, and the people who supposedly where he's living are allowing him to live there as a squatter, but that's not really for us to investigate, because it's somebody's house, unfortunately, they're allowing him to be there. But, yeah, he's definitely, you know, gotta play the system.
Yeah.
Okay.
It'll, it'll take its course.
Yeah, well, Jimmy, thank you for your help with this. Is there any new business to come before the court?
Yeah, I, I have something on new business, and this is for the board, Freddie, Dave, whoever can help. You know, on, on Facebook, somebody's been putting up these clothes bins and how they're overflowing, and, you know, you know, I really don't pay much mind to Facebook, but the one person made a comment that towns can create a resolution that if a clothes bin is on the property, you know, and, and the people who are taking clothes, but are trying to help, so they shouldn't be penalized. But the company, we can force the company to have pickups so often. So I'm gonna ask the board if we don't have a law that we pass a resolution, have Sean look into it, to pass a resolution that if a clothes bin is placed in our community, it has to be picked up every so often, a specified amount of time, and if not, it must be removed.
Joe, Joe, is this the property on nine W?
It, it's just not that, Fred, it's, it's a lot of them, I know there was.
Because I got a, I got a call on, over the weekend, and of course, we had a holiday Monday, we only had a day Tuesday, but I, we're now getting calls about that, and, and I guess maybe the best thing to do is we'll talk to Sean and, and see if we can proceed with that and put the onus back on the property owner.
Well, I, I don't think we wanna penalize the property owner more than if we, if, if we had a law that, you know, if you put a bin in our town, you have to get a permit, and once you get the, the company, and you have to abide by our rules, that, you know, you have to pick it up every week or every two weeks, and, you know, if you don't, and we see that, what's going on, then we make them take that bin away, they have to take it away, they can't bring it back.
So, Joe, you know that the Rotary has some, I'm not saying that they're the ones that are.
The Rotary's different, the Rotary is all, is, you know, is our community, and they do their part, they actually are closed right now because of COVID, and it's really sad, they have a sign on it that it's closed, and they're not accepting it on the rail trail, but people are just dropping the stuff off, that, that's different. You know, that one's saying that, that's the Rotary, it says it's not accepting, please don't leave anything. It's, it's those bins, and, and the clothes, a lot of people don't realize is, some of them go to people, but others, what they do is they take the clothes up and they, they make rags out of them for shops and places like that to sell. You know, but the thing is, is it's about profit, the longer they wait to pick it up, the, the more profit they make, because it's, they don't have to pick it up. So if we made a law that every month or every two weeks, it must be picked up, and if it doesn't, then you have to, to take it and have them file a permit, that this way, they have to abide by our law, because they don't even know, but, so that's all I'm recommending.
And I'll talk to Sean tomorrow, and then I'll get back to, back to you and Lenny and move that ball forward. I agree.
Just one thing on that, I don't think you can put two weeks or a month or whatever, it must be picked up just as soon as anything is visible.
Yeah, I think, that's a good point, Lenny. Because I had.
Well, let's, let's give that to Sean.
Right.
Let's give that to Sean, and then we can craft this resolution.
Let's see what legally we can do.
Yeah.
You know, because from what I'm understanding is, a friend of mine had one on his property, trying to do the right thing and help people, and he would call the company repeatedly, telling them that it was getting full, and they just didn't come, and months would go by, they just wouldn't pick it up. And then he finally told them that they had to take it away. So.
Okay, well, let's, 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 well, let's get, we'll get together with Sean and, and let's create something that works for us. Okay, any other new business? Seeing them, is there any privilege to the floor?
Fred, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
This is Mark Reynolds.
Hi, Mark.
I just had two, two questions, which, which has been talked about a little bit before. The first one is, have any steps been taken towards creating an affordable housing committee that was voted on by the board maybe now two years ago to create?
Actually, I, I had a conversation with Lenny about this the other day, as we were talking about apartments, and as we, as we get into this year, and, and maybe get a little breathing room, we'll proceed with that.
Okay, do you have any sort of timeline in the back of your mind?
I, I don't right at the moment, not with what's happening, but we're not gonna just let it just drift away.
Okay, and the other thing I brought up, I think last month, was the, excuse me, there's a, in the town code, there is a provision that has the zoning board has to appear before the town board at least four times a year to update them on what they've done and decisions they've made. And I wondered if you've given that some thought?
The only thing, the only thing I could say to that, and, and we could, we can talk to that as a board, but we have a liaison to the zoning board that reports to us monthly, and I'm not sure if they're, if quarterly, if they can give us anything more than what our liaison gives us monthly, because then we have a month, a month, a month. So I, I, I think we got that kinda covered, but, you know, we can.
Well, I wonder, I will send you the provision, an email, I'll send you the part of the code, and it talks about having, they need to report to the town board periodically.
Okay.
Not, it doesn't say liaison.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
I appreciate it. Any other, any other comments on privilege of the floor? Seeing them, we'll move to motions and resolutions. First, I think, Sean, don't we, do we need to close the public hearing first?
Yeah, if there's nobody who has any comments, I mean, you, you, if you'd wanna act on it, you should close it, yes.
Okay. Are there any comments or, or anything? On the, on the two. Stop signs. So seeing them, I need a motion to close the public hearing. Second from Lenny, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Public hearing is closed. Go to both of those resolutions. Resolution will be, or. First couple of sentences.
Actually, the same as F. Put in there is a plug to remind. Suppose level G of two thousand and twenty. They're gonna. Put stop signs up.
Okay, do I have a motion on the resolution?
I'll second it.
Second.
Second, all.
I'm saying again, I'm just gonna stay with the vote.
Okay.
Those vicinity's.
Okay, four, four and one extension.
Nice.
Motion to approve the minute, yes?
Christian Grasso, just on the TV, is it normal that?
We haven't had any direct.
One more, having a meeting?
I know nothing about.
I'm playing over and over.
Well, she goes, I can't hear you guys, and I'm.
Can we play this meeting or?
Put this meeting up on Channel twenty-two in a couple of days.
No, I, I know that, and that's great.
Pleasure.
But. Got that a cable company to put up.
Not, not at this time.
All right, thank you.
Second to approve the minutes, all in favor? Resolution to. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Motion.
May I have a? Aye. Opposed, no, so carried, five zero. Lenny, wanna read C, please?
Um.
C. Yep.
Oh, C, resolution to accept and approve the transient merchant market application of Mark Christiane at a fee of a hundred and fifty dollars to expire on twelve thirty-one twenty twenty-one.
Sorry, that's a renewal, do I have a motion for the resolution?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, zero, so carried. We'll skip down to.
D, we're going down to E.
I thought you said E was duplicate.
No, D was duplicate.
Oh, D, D, I'm sorry.
So whereas the town wishes to again retain the services of Joe Chapani as a special prosecutor for the calendar year two thousand and twenty-one pursuant to the service agreement attached here to.
Okay, just so you know, we, we, this, we missed, it didn't make it to the reorg meeting, so this is a renewal, do I have a motion?
Mizetti motions.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, five zero, so carried. We did, we did F, so Wendy, G?
D, resolution authorize a town to pay a stipend of twenty dollars a month for Wendy Rzynski and Margaret O'Halloran for the use of their personal cell phones for business purposes.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Got you, just, just a quick question. And I'm all for reimbursing for cell phones, just wanna make sure that there's other people who reimburse for their cell phones, is that the same amount? Because if it's less, then we wanna make sure it's the same amount others are getting, we just wanna make sure it's aligned, just wanna make sure that.
Others, others use their phone full-time as a, as, as some elected officials do, and some department heads, this is a reimbursement, because they do use their phones in the personal business, so it's, it's.
Weekends and holidays.
Yes.
Yes, Joe, to answer your question, it's the same stipend that I believe that some of the building department people get, they don't get a full payment per phone.
Right. Now, that's all I'm asking. And um, you know, we may want to look at moving forward, Wendy, if, if you're using, because you are elected official head of a department, maybe getting you a, a town phone if that's something you need.
Okay, uh, I need a motion on the resolution.
Motion.
I'm sorry. All right, I have a motion and a second. Uh, uh, do I have a, a, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, so carried, five zero. H?
Resignation to, resignation of Catherine Mann's account clerk part-time effective Thursday, January fourteenth, twenty twenty-one.
I'll speak to that. Uh, we hired, we had about five or six interviews. Um, we, uh, we, we thought we had the right person with Catherine. She came in for a couple of days, just wasn't what she expected. Didn't fit for her. We had a very close runner-up, um, and we called Francesca in, um, and she was on this resolution. She'll, she's very qualified. She'll start on Monday, but going back to H, I need a motion on the resolution.
Motion.
Motion and a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried, five zero. Uh, Wendy, you want to read I, please?
Resolution to authorize to hire Francesca Santansky to the position of account clerk part-time at the rate of nineteen forty-five per hour. Budgets afforded at the recommendation of Fred Pizzuto supervisor effective Monday, January twenty fifth.
Motion.
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, five zero, so carried. Uh, J?
Hey, this is Wendy. We wasn't ready for reorg again. Resolution to authorize supervisor to sign the twenty twenty-one calendar year kennel agreement with Gardner Animal Hospital at a cost of twenty-five dollars per day for the first five days and twenty dollars per day starting day six until a dog is removed.
Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so carried. Uh, Lenny, you want to just give us a quick motion for an extension for one month on uh, okay?
Uh, I'd like to make a motion that we extend the ambulance contract until the last day of February at the twenty twenty rate and service.
Okay, I have a, I have a, I have a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Uh, we spoke about this. As soon as we have a form, a more formalized uh, information from them in the next couple of days, I will get that out to the whole board. So early on in the beginning of February, we can talk about this so this doesn't continue to happen. Um, and it goes back to John Goodman. So I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, uh, five zero. Uh, are there any other resolutions to come before the boards this evening? Seeing none, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
To adjourn.
Motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five zero, so carried. We're adjourned, gang.
Bye, guys.
Thank you.
Hey, everybody.
Good evening.
Ready?
Hold on, let me get, let me get off the air.
Oh, it's, it's okay.